The Board of Trustees, North Liberty is called to order. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda for this evening? Hearing none and seeing no public, no public comment, we'll move to approval of the August minutes. Have we reviewed the August minutes and seem happy? Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the August minutes.
My second.
All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the minutes for August are approved. The next item, reports.
All right.
Director Garner.
As usual, the budget report is pretty self-explanatory. I don't think there's a lot to say. We always have the front-loading of some of the big things like databases, and those will continue to increase, but otherwise, we're in pretty good shape. We're at seventeen, we're at sixteen percent for personnel, thirteen percent for the Personnel Services, which is like our training budget and things of that nature. And then the repairs and utility and maintenance is where we spend a lot of money, like for our ILS and other things. That's where you see the spikes in those different areas. But we're at eighteen percent overall, average is seventeen, so we're sitting pretty well. Yeah, does anybody have any questions about the budget? All right, do you want me just to move on through my?
Would you please move on to Friends?
The Friends did not, the Friends did not meet. They will meet, I'm like lost, they're talking about, um, they'll meet this month, and they're gonna, they'll talk about, start talking about the Cookie Walk, and if they're gonna do a fall book sale or not, they haven't really determined that yet. They thought they might, but we'll see what happens. But yeah, it's next week is their meeting. And then my report, I will scroll down so I can get to it. The library is fully staffed. We have hired two new people, Taylor and Claire just started, and they are, Taylor and Megan, we've already had Claire on staff. Taylor and Megan are our new hires, and they are almost through their initial onboarding. Of course, the training is ongoing, but they're getting there. They'll work their first weekend here coming up in the next week or two. So those vacancies are filled, I said filled vacations on here, but I meant vacancies. That's great. And both of them have some library experience, which is nice. And I know Taylor is going to Library Science, is enrolled in Library Science School or planning to go, which is always great. So building maintenance, I don't remember if I talked a little bit about this last time, but we are working on, I met with the architects to talk about design for our information desk updates that will happen this year, and our sound buffers down the hallway. It's gonna, they've got some really fun ideas. I'm really excited. They're gonna try to do some really colorful designs, potentially some hanging in the middle of the hallway, some like waves and cool colors down the hallway. So we're super excited about that. And the circulation desk, they are working on preliminary designs. I haven't heard anything back yet. The biggest hope is that they will come in at the right cost, because knowing the way supply chain is, things have gone up quite a bit. But we're hopeful that we'll be able to do that. Just finished scheduling the carpet and furniture cleaning. The, if you count, especially in the kids' area, the carpet always gets pretty nasty around the kids' computers where they are not really supposed to eat, but seem to eat there a lot anyway. And we also had four new chairs upholstered. If you haven't been in, we took the four chairs that were in the middle, kind of in the middle of the library around, in a circle by the teen lounge, which is where the kind of middle grades kids hang out. And they were red on the bottom, and we had them reupholstered, and we decided to go with like a really bright chartreuse, chartreuse green. So they're super cool. They look really good. And then Chris set up a new sound system in the meeting rooms, and he explains a little bit more about that in his. But we have a sound bar now and a nice big screen TV to project onto, and much, a little more, uh, sound is better. It was having some rough time with the sound before, so. And then I just wanted to share the podcast, because I think it's so exciting. And we have four podcasts. The Story Walk podcast is limited. It's only a few times, and it's only on for a small duration because of copyrights. So in thinking about that, the other three podcasts have had over 6,000 listens just this year, which I think is really cool. I just really, I thought that was fun to share, the amount. And then I just talked about some of the professional activities that I've been doing. One is the, the Realm is something that I had participated in over the last couple of years during COVID. I have presented for Realm through the, virtually, on the resilience in libraries. And then they did a bunch of research on, they did, when we, for instance, when COVID first started, they did a lot of research on navigating the cleaning of the books and what we needed to do with materials, clean, making sure that material, contact, surface contact, and what, what was actually spreading and couldn't spread. I mean, really, nothing. But we spent a lot of time wiping down materials before we knew. And then as their reports became more available, and we were able to see that we didn't have to, for instance, people were, we were keeping the books quarantined for long periods of time for a while, and all those steps to try to keep them, and wiping down every piece of material, probably the best, cleanest they've ever been, probably something that should be continued. So they got, they, they met to talk about what came out of that research, and moving forward, how can we prepare if something like that were to happen again? It was really interesting. And then, uh, I'm super excited, I got to, I was invited to speak to the Federal Depository Library, Libraries, which is where all the government information and gov docs are stored. Either, both, like, University of Iowa was a regional storage place, so they have like everything that government docs has ever produced in 100 years. Plus, it's crazy. Or you can also just be an online depository. They really want to get a feel for what rural, rural libraries have challenges in getting that, that information out to its citizens. So I was there as a representative for the Association of Small and Rural Libraries, but what came out of that is probably that we will become an online depository at North Liberty. It doesn't take a lot to do it, to do that piece. If you were doing the full thing, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the storage space or the staff capacity to do the full. But the online is just, when I taught, we talked with them, we talked about, even though Iowa City is right down the street, some people feel a little overwhelmed by going to the University of Iowa and things like that. So we'll get some training on how to help people access that information, and then just make it available on our website. You do have to have a congressperson recommend you as that, and I believe they helped bridge that, and it would be Senator Chuck Grassley would have to recommend us, but it sounds like it's pretty fairly straightforward process. So I'll keep you guys know, but it sounds like we're going to go forward with that. And then we just have the different reports from the staff. Does anyone have any questions about those? I will point out that Ann Patchett is going to be at the library, or not at the library, virtually, with the, our local library's Lit partnership that we have, and that's very, very exciting. And if you haven't seen the library card signup month video, you should take a look, because it's very cute. Melanie linked to it in her thing. So that is all that I have.
Thank you very much. Shall we move on to policy review?
Yes, we should.
Very good.
So it looks a little crazy whenever you look at these with all the different tracking in them, but I did want you guys to be able to see that mainly the red changes that were made. And this is, most of those come from the IDEA Committee, the Diversity Committee, just checking for inclusion and diversity, making sure that we're using good lang, neutral language, and not keeping anyone out. The other thing that's on here, that I can't see right this second, is that we added, um, under the bill, or somewhere with the ALA Bill of Rights, that we also want to be sure that, oh, it's not on there, where is it? Okay, so what I want to add, and it's not showing up there, I don't know why, because I put it in once, but is the Association for Rural and Small Libraries also has a statement on access to information, an intellectual freedom statement, which I would add to, under the Material Selection Guidelines, under F. So that would be just an adding to substantiate, like the Library Bill of Rights and the Freedom to Read and the Freedom to View. We would also include something about the Association for Rural and Small Libraries there with their policy. Does anyone have any questions about those suggested changes? And then moving on to the next section, which is the reconsideration of Materials Request Form. So this is, I did a few things. I took this and made it, oh, there's where we have the Association for Rural and Small Libraries, Access to Information Statement. I was wondering, I thought I'd put it in there. So I took this plus, this form and made it a fillable PDF that we'll have on our website. And I kind of wanted to talk a little bit about this, because I think it's really interesting is, in all the time that I've been in libraries, all libraries, most libraries, make this form very difficult to fill out and long. And, I mean, I even had someone say at our conference last week that they, they makes the patron write like a report in order to fill it.
Yeah.
And what came to me, as I was talking about this with other people, is that we, our goal is to make it things accessible for everyone. And are, what are we doing by not making this accessible for people? We may not agree with people wanting to request reconsideration on books or materials, but our job is to make things accessible. So my goal, and I brought this up at conference, and I got a few sideways, sideways glances, but I still, I still stand firm that I think it needs to be available to people. So we'll make it a little easier to fill out. But what I want them to do is have some intentionality behind what they're answering. So you'll see some new, this is the old form, and then the new form is the second one. Like, what is your primary concern about this material? And this one doesn't. So what I did was, I wanted to add another one of the, another question that is basically, what about this piece of material makes you feel unsafe? And that, I had, I don't know why it's not showing up, because I did change it, but it.
There's a second one, there's.
It's not in that one either, though.
Yeah, it is.
Is it? Where?
Yeah.
Am I missing it?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Interesting.
It doesn't show up on this form, on here, though.
Really? I printed out the packet.
Yeah.
Rather than asking about the primary concerns, you're asking.
Yes. What makes you feel unsafe about this? Because we want to get to the heart of why people are worried about the material.
How often does this come up?
Well, very, not often here. We just, Scott, after the last meeting, after he was elected president, asked to meet with me, and then basically, we talked about intellectual freedom and making sure that we're prepared if something were to happen, rather than being reactive after the fact. In fact, I just saw a map today from a study that was done, just showing all the, like, over 2,000 banned books across the United States, going on in different schools and public libraries. And Iowa has zero to 10. So we're light peach in, in actual bans, not just requests for bans, but actual bans. We're light, we're not very crazy, like, some of them are like glaring orange. I'm glad we're not those. I wish we were none, but there's only a few here. So I think we're okay right now. And Congress also just came out with a resolution against book banning at the, at the national level, which is very exciting. I'm so glad to see that.
So when, if and when somebody filled out this form, what happens with it?
So that is gonna go to another piece of this too, but we will.
Sorry, I'm jumping out.
No, 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 it's curious. It all, it all comes together. One of the other things that Scott and I talked about, and it's included in the packet, is just the rules for public comment at a meeting. So basically, I would take the form, we would have a discussion. If they decided they wanted to pursue it, at the next, it would come here to you guys. And then eventually go move through this to the city council.
Gotcha.
But you guys would have the first just chance to listen. And so the public comment form that's included in the packet just is like, I think I did, like, I tried to keep it short. Some of them are really long, and I really used a lot of what the, the city council already has for their wording. But basically, that they would have, the gist of it is three minute, or two minutes or less to comment. They don't get to share their time with someone else. If they don't want to use their time, they can't give it to someone else. They, residents would have first priority to speak before non-residents. And then there's no obligation for response from the board.
Okay.
It would just be listening, a chance to hear.
So in the case of, I guess, regardless, I guess, depending on how we as a board decide to, you know, if we're in favor of, you know, if we're supporting what the public is bringing or not supporting it, is, are we acting more in just, uh, are we just giving a recommendation to the city council there? It's going to city council regardless of what we say, we're just giving a recommendation? Okay, good to know.
Cool.
And I've been preparing the city council as well, with lots of little information tidbits and things that I give out during my monthly, my monthly notes that I, or reports that we bring to them. So the public comment thing is not included in the packet, because that was before I knew that Scott was going to be here. We thought we would defer that to the next meeting, but if you guys are ready, you guys can talk about whether it looks good in the draft form, or if you want to vote on it next time, or whatever you want to do.
You'll probably look at it and talk about it next time. Give everyone an opportunity to, to take a good look.
That'd be great.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
And insofar as the, the form being more easy to use, I think probably in the same report that you're talking about, the PEN America that just came out, they called it spontaneous and organic expressions of citizens' concern, being a more valid kind of express, of, of public comment, or questioning of, or reconsidering of materials, as opposed to the organized political efforts to ban huge sets of, of readings. So I'm okay and happy with making it more easy for an individual with, you know, sincere concerns to be able to engage with a process so that we have an opportunity to let them know that professional librarians know how to curate a collection.
Yeah. Exactly. So for the most part, as much as craziness as the collection development policy looks like it's changing, it's really not that much. It's just a lot of red.
Any more questions or observations for the policy that we've just looked at? Then considering both items, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
My second.
Second by Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? The policies are approved and for another year. Thank you very much. Do we have any old business from earlier meetings to attend to? Nope. New business? Let's see some intellectual freedom presentation, please.
All right.
I brought my far-seeing glasses, too.
I was gonna try to sit down, and then I realized I would have to move the slides, so I have to stand up.
So this was actually a presentation that Erin and I gave at the library conference that we went to in Association for Rural and Small Libraries. I did two presentations at that conference. One was on policy development, which apparently is now my, my training niche. So that one, but they asked me to, to touch on intellectual freedom at that as well. So that's where all this came up, this conversation of our policy, our reconsideration policy and all the things. This particular presentation came up because at a meeting that Erin and I attended, some folks were saying, well, we don't, we don't have diverse diversity in our communities. We don't see the need for diverse materials and other things that made us, our hearts get a little bit hurt and scared. So this first slide, I won't go into a lot, but at, at the training, we talked about, we asked people, you know, what size their communities were. And then I introduced myself as a, born and raised in a rural community in Iowa, and talked a little bit about North Liberty, which I don't need to do here. But what I do want to do is talk to a little bit about some of the things that I also asked them, which were things like, how many people in this session have people of color, or perhaps people who weren't born in the United States living in their communities? How many believe that in your towns you have families who've suffered from domestic violence? How many of you have families with sensory processing challenges? Households with divorced caregivers or blended families? These are all the people who serve, we serve in our libraries, and not all of those things are visible, but we know many people like that in our communities. That's inclusion. And we provide diverse resources for people of all different walks of life, so I'm pretty sure that everyone in here raised their hand on one of these issues. So what about the invisible people that we don't know about? In 1950, about 40% of Americans lived in rural areas, and that dropped from 49% in 1920. And today, about 14% of our population is rural, or living, it's 46 million people. The fact is that our rural populations are dwindling, and in our communities, we see poverty, food insecurity, healthcare issues, low broadband. And residents who live in smaller, more isolated areas face greater difficulties accessing these provisions and services. They commute to work, and among other things, they have economic development challenges. Given all of these factors, we propose that the large part of our work includes helping people ensure, helping ensure that not only our libraries are sustainable, but that our communities are sustainable. In turn, providing avenues and paths for growth and development. Learning is process acquire, is the process of acquiring a new understanding, knowledge, behavior, skills. The acquisition of knowledge and skills does not happen in a bubble. It happens through experience, study, and teaching. All of us know that access to information plays a key role in lifelong literacy and learning. That means providing information that not only reflects those in our communities, but the views beyond our small-town borders. How many of you have kids who hang out at the library every day because their parents work or their houses are too crowded? How many of you have provided snacks or redirected these kids? That's social responsibility. It's embedded in everything we do as librarians. And what we're talking about here takes that step just a little further to inclusion and accessibility. So then I talked about a story that I heard the week before at a meeting with IMLS, where a director of a library in Wilmot, Connecticut, maybe? Anyway, an eastern, eastern town, and about 70-some thousand people, which is a little bigger than what we serve in our rural populations. But he talked about looking out the window and seeing a kiddo of about six or seven with a pair of wire cutters stealing a bike, and then seeing that child put into the back of a police car. And he talked about how it's our responsibility as citizens and librarians to help kids learn and to help them grow, and that that social responsibility then produces a popu, an educated population and an educated workforce. So that's a great argument for our leaders, our community leaders. What are we doing in libraries? We're creating an educated workforce. We're helping with economic development in those ways. I believe that libraries, as community hubs, act as spokes, connecting everyone in their community to the resources they need. This story just brings home the role that libraries must play in providing services, programs, and materials where they see themselves not only reflected, but they see a glimpse of the world outside their own hometown. We must raise the voices of our most vulnerable populations in our communities to ensure that they continue to thrive. So Erin talked about diversity and what it looked like, what's it look like to people? She, she actually lived in Kelowna before she moved to North Liberty, to our library. She worked in the Kelowna Library. And she talked just about her experience there and the things that she saw in Kelowna, where they had literally one family of color, and, and helping serve that, that family. And then we talked about our takeaways, which you guys don't need to know about. And then we showed this picture. So, and we asked them to give us a little bit of a, a story. Tell us the story of each of these people. I'm not going to go into the stories. I will say that the, the, that boy with the short hair is my son. And every, the, the things that they said are just great. They talked about him being a college-educated kid. They talked about him being a young Republican, maybe, which is really laughable. And I will tell you all here that he is, and he was educated. He also is a felon. He is an electrician today, and he's very successful, but it took a long time to get him there with a lot of parental support and family support. And then I'll talk to you about Ellie, who is next to him in the top, on the top. Ellie is, used to be Miles. Miles was one of our patrons in the library, and they volunteered for Erin, with Erin. And Miles gave permission. We actually, since, since Miles was under 18, we asked permission. And they thought maybe Miles was our IT guy at our library. They thought maybe Miles was a nerd and some other, they thought maybe he was headed off to college, or that they were headed off to college. And now Miles is Ellie. Today, Miles is Ellie, and his parents, their, their parents are very, very supportive. I, we're still learning to say "they" for Miles, because they, or for Ellie, because they have chosen, they've asked to change their gender and, and be also identified as "they/them." We are so grateful to Miles, Ellie's parents for helping us so that we can better serve Miles when Miles is in the library, who's now Ellie. I'm sorry, I'm gonna keep saying Miles. But we talked to Ellie, and we asked if it was okay. We talked to Ellie's mom, and we asked if it was okay if we used Ellie as an example, and Ellie said that'd be cool. So, we love having those relationships and knowing that we can serve Ellie in the best way when they are in the library. And we would not know that if it wasn't for Ellie's mom. So that was what we pointed out, that we can't know someone's story just by the, when they walk in the door. Erin talked about relationship building and how hard we work in the library and how much training we have to work with the kids and make sure that they have a voice in our libraries, and working with United Action for Youth to get that training. And that trust is the key to what we do every day in the library, and maintaining and investing in those relationships is super important. That diversity is more than skin deep. And then we talked about social advocacy that helps our funders understand and our leaders understand why we do what we do, conveying that message and the importance of having that educated workforce and the importance of reading fluencies in the library. And we just talked about some of the stuff we did during the pandemic, which everybody, we asked people what else they did too. And all these things that we did all helped reach our marginalized populations by increasing the Wi-Fi. Obviously, almost every library in the United States, I think, had to increase their Wi-Fi. We, the Neighborhood Nest was a program that Erin was involved in, where she helped make, they had nests around the community. We actually were set to be a nest, which is a place for the students to come study during the pandemic when they didn't have access to computers at home or they needed that extra support. We ended up not needing to be a nest, but Erin stayed firm with that group the whole time, helping them. And we actually had a really, really nice compliment from a local leader, Colleen Ryan, to let him know how much she appreciated the library's involvement in that and Erin's work on that and her knowledge. So those things are super important. And then we talked about radical trust, which is how we try to ensure that everybody who comes in the library is, whether they have a, don't have an ID or they're, you know, we have people who aren't comfortable giving out all of their information, and we make sure that they still have a library card, that they have access to the materials that they need, and helping them address these things. Talked about our IDEA Committee, which you guys know about already. Community Assessments is something they're working on now. I'm really excited. They just brought me a proposal to do a focus group with three different marginalized groups to find out how we can better serve those groups. That's coming in the. That's coming in the spring. We are hoping, we're working on some funding mechanisms to make that happen. And we talked about our strategic plan, which you guys have seen um and the, how it's embedded with diversity throughout the plan. Inclusion and diversity are a huge part of that. Um our latest thing is working on our job posts and our interviews. We've actually added some cultural competency questions to our interviews um about asking folks about their situational cultural competencies and how they handle situations. Um and then just having inclusivity and equity in all of our policies. As we, as you guys know, we've been trying to change all the wording to they um and changing the word parents to caregivers and guardians because not everyone is, lives with a parent. Erin talked about the diversity audit that we've done to continue and continue to do to ensure that our collections are diverse and reflect not only the community, but the world around us. And then we just talked about our own commitment to equity, which is an inclusion, which is another thing that you guys will see in your packet for next month. Um that at the North Liberty Library, we commit to treating every individual with dignity and respect. We strive to create a safe, inviting environment where inclusion and belonging are a natural part of our culture. These values are reflected in our policies and in our service. We want people to feel safe, engaged and valued when they come into the library. And we aspire for diversity as well. We haven't actively been recruiting for diverse staff. Um and if you saw a picture of us, we look like a bunch of straight white people, except for Kelly. Um but what we actually have is not near typical. We're not all straight in our, in our um library staff. We're not all white. Um and then we have near diversity in our staff. We have mental health challenges in our staff. We have speech, speech challenges. We have tattoos. We have families of color and all the things. So the main thing we do is try to train our staff to have an empathetic framework so that they can um deliver service with empathy. Now, I said at this that we can't strain, we can train our staff to deliver service with empathy. We can't always train our staff to be empathetic, but we hope that we can train them to think with compassion and and respond accordingly with their delivery of service. And that's all that I have for you tonight. Does anyone have any questions for me? No? Anything stand out? Nothing?
I think it, that was great. I loved the, when you pulled up the photos, that exercise, you know? Like I work in corporate training, so that's very familiar to like, tell us what their story is, right? But I thought those were stock photos. And when you started to tell me that they were real people, that's like another layer of like, oh, this is really interesting. So I think that was really compelling.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. This is great. Thanks for sharing it with us.
Thank you.
All right. That was a really quick for a 15 minute presentation. We had lots of, we had lots of great um questions that day and and conversations. It was nice. We learned a ton of exciting things that we're ready to try at the library. And somewhere in your packet is um although I'm not sure how to get to it from here. In the folder that that I had, you guys would have seen, and you don't need to pull it up now, but I did include a statement of inclusivity um and some other samples mm hmm of uh like Iowa City has um something and then some other libraries that I pulled from Sonoma County. I don't know if I included Sonoma's counties in there. Um I used a lot of their stuff to to create this. Um and then I think maybe King County. I can't remember the other one that I put in there. But I, in talking to Scott, that was one thing we talked about was perhaps having um as a board, having you guys have a statement of inclusivity from the board that could then go onto our website and just basically say exactly what we're saying here in this meeting. That we want to make sure that we have materials for everyone, that we're a welcoming environment where people feel they belong.
I think that's a great idea.
So I wrote that and you guys can take it. I mean, it literally was just a draft and then drafted the public comments so that those two things can go maybe on the next agenda for for you guys to discuss and decide if you, how you want to proceed or if there's suggestions for, um if you have suggestions for changes, um if you get them to me. I will have the packet done a week from Wednesday. Hopefully, that's my goal before I leave.
So I need to have my agenda to you by tomorrow. You know how prompt I am with the minutes?
Monday, just Monday next week.
Oh, dear.
Yeah, and the minutes.
I'm just like looking at my scratchings here, just nervous about trying to type this out.
You can always go back and watch the video.
That's true.
The scintillating video.
Oh, man.
I always uh check my notes against the YouTube. There are like 13 views and half of them would be mine. All right. I think we are at the end, everyone.
God, that was quick.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? We are adjourned.